I call this the evening of contract, three thousand. You order today is September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and it's seven oh seven P M. With the clerk calling rules, please.
Uh, Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Present.
Councilman Musa is running late. Uh, all announcements here. Al Samiri, we have four.
Thank you. Please vice. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the citizens and people who live there. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements? I believe there is one.
I believe there is one on there, Mayor.
The fire department.
Uh, there is going to be an open house. Hamtramck Fire Department, uh, open house and touch a truck event on September twenty-second at the firehouse. Uh, I believe T B W and the police are also going to be involved in that if I'm not mistaken. Uh, the flyer is online.
Any other announcements?
No, sir.
All right. We move to the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, and we have the first one. New smart routes options and update.
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel here to give a presentation.
Good evening. This will be short, more so just a community announcement, but there's a material that Ron, I think you could pull up, um, pages five and six.
Just TV not working.
No, no.
I'm sorry, that one unfortunately, that was what blew out on our meeting last time, so we're getting that replaced. Not the TV, not the TV, the split unit.
Sure. So. Um, it'll be the, yep, page five and six of this P E F. So, um, SMART is undergoing a community survey and feedback period until the thirtieth of this month. Two of these new routes are, uh, proposed ideas to go through Hamtramck. Eventually, one will be selected. So, um, C E D wanted to present this and bring it before council and the public to advertise a couple of these smart, organized, community feedback sessions. Um, one is going to be online on the eighteenth and another on the twenty-fourth of this month. In the agenda items, we've also linked, um, a survey that people can go and take it. Takes just about thirty seconds if you would like to go give your input about which of these two scenarios, uh, looks best to you. Um, they kind of prioritize a couple of different things. The first route, uh, prioritizes improving frequency of the route and the second focuses a bit more on widening the coverage area of the routes. Our residents pay taxes into the SMART system. We just want to make sure that they can provide input about these routes before that engagement period ends on the thirtieth. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, you have the second one is proclamation honoring Labor Day Festival and create on tears.
Ron, are you ready yet, or?
Sure.
Whereas the Labor Day Festival is a cherished annual tradition in the city of Hamtramck, bringing together residents, visitors, and community members to celebrate our city's rich cultural diversity and sense of community. And whereas in recent years, the Labor Day Festival has been thoughtfully planned and successfully executed by Conrad Mezziars and Shannon Lawwell along with, is that correct pronunciation? I apologize.
Yeah.
Um, along with a group of dedicated volunteers whose tireless efforts and commitment have made the event a resounding success. And whereas Labor Day Festival provides invaluable opportunities for local businesses, places of worship, community organizations, local artists, and more to showcase their involvement and dedication to the city of Hamtramck. And whereas this, uh, the festival not only enhances the cultural vibrancy of Hamtramck, but also strengthens community bonds, fosters local pride, and supports economic growth for the city and its residents. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Hamtramck extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Conrad Mezziars, Shannon Lawwell, and the entire team of volunteers for their hard work, passion, and dedication in organizing the Labor Day Festival. Their commitment has helped preserve and elevate this beloved tradition, ensuring it continues to thrive for future generations. Passed and proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Hamtramck, Wayne County, Michigan, this ninth day of September, two thousand twenty-four, signed by Mayor Amadou.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, we also have obviously Shannon and Conrad here and several of our other volunteers as well. Uh, can we ask the newly stand up and give them a hand for a techno festival?
Just want to say, uh, thank you for the proclamation. I just want to recognize the other committee members. Uh, Shannon and I were recognized specifically in the proclamation, but we have Mickey Lyons and Corey Duff here that were in attendance. We're valuable members. Also members that, uh, were part of the volunteer community are Katie Kalonis, Scott Collins, Jeff Fournier, Andrew Hecker, John Shemansky, Frank and Shelley Woodman, Jessica Urban, Leonard La, Mary Long, and Mary Alice Marasha. So, thank you for all those as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come in.
Uh, now we move to the additions, deletions of the agenda. Uh, do we have any additions? Looks like we have one, uh, added resolution, twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-four approving Zeman for the development and sale of three three five one dorms, uh, to Akram and the Rush. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. All right. All in favor of moving that?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. So that would be resolution, keep the same number one twenty-four, but it will be letter I.
One more vote, please. The foodie agenda is amended.
Motion, all second. Call of favor? Aye.
All right, no objections?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, so any other additions or deletions?
No, sir.
All right, we move to the public comments then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, have Abraham under him?
I just have two things to talk about today.
Please push the button on the mic. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good.
Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney, clerk, and police chief. I have two things to talk about today. First one is I would like to thank the volunteers and the city of Hamtramck and the police department for the most successful and safest festival in four decades. Chief, you brought the experience of New York to, to Wayne County, in the city of, uh, Hamtramck and the state of Michigan. Thank you for doing what you did. We had officers on rooftops. I only see that one there when I go and work in campaigns for presidents, for people that run for presidents. Thank you for that. The second thing I'm in support of, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one hundred and seventeen, approving the newly negotiated agreement between the city of Hamtramck and the P O A M for the police department. We support it. Safety is the most important thing in this country, and that's the most important thing that we need, and that's the last thing we need to go away from us. Safety, safety, safety. Please support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the public comments, Mayor.
Okay, that's quick. All right, so we move to the consent agenda, and this is approved with the same in motion with no discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'm trying to move letter B to the new business.
Are you ready to? You have to suspend the law.
Yeah, should have done that, but we can suspend the law.
There has to be a second to suspend the law.
Second.
Uh, letter B, approving of voice register to new business force.
So, letter B, which is approved of invoice register dating September ten, two thousand twenty-four, that would be a new business. It would be I F, right?
I J.
G H I F.
J.
I.
J.
I J.
J Y J. We just added one.
We added I, not J.
Maybe Alice is, maybe I.
I thought that was before J.
No, it's F G H I J.
Jacob.
J like J.
We, Mr. Mayor, we just added I, right? So what, after I?
I J.
Okay.
We had F, F, it's A B C D E F G H I J. So we're adding I and J to the new business.
Okay, I was thinking.
No, because this is I, that's why.
Just trust me.
Yeah. Because we got two resolutions, so.
All right, so let's put it with the order, I F, J K. Is it that order?
H I J K. Go, start from A. Honest, they start from A. You start from A.
No, you do it.
A B.
A B C D E F G H I J.
What's after J?
K.
What's after that?
L M N.
Where's the F?
A B C D E F.
Oh, okay. So already here now. Oh, it's already.
The F was on your English class in high school.
All right, I got the F in there. I thought we had. Okay, thank you. So, uh, it will be letter J, that would be instead of B, approving of course register date ending September ten, two thousand twenty-four. So we got two items, consent agenda, one approval of minutes from the August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but I'm gonna need another approval of the amended agenda.
I motion, all second.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, right?
Aye.
So the consent agenda, we have two items, approval of minutes from the August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four, uh, regular city council meeting, and then C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending September ten, two thousand twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we move to the new business, and we have the first item, A, resolution twenty twenty-four, one sixteen, accepting grant from the Institute of, uh, Responsive Government and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is a grant that our city clerk applied for. Uh, I'll let her have the floor to explain exactly.
Uh, it's for, to allow me to use the extra money for election expenses. So, more money for election, why not obtain it? So we find eighteen thousand dollars.
All right, I guess no discussion around that, right?
No, sir.
We can vote, please.
Uh, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-four, one sixteen, approved.
Thank you. The next one is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four, one seventeen, approving the newly negotiated agreement between city of Hamtramck and P O A M.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Amir here, our controller, and myself, and of course, representation from the police department significantly here on this. Uh, just to cap it off, we've been in negotiations with the fire, or with the police department for, uh, not a long time, but, uh, but kind of there's a lot of prep work behind this, so I actually say it's been kind of a long time. It just went swiftly after the fire department wrapped up. Um, and we've come to a tentative agreement, which I think is, uh, is very fair. Um, the union has actually given up significant upon a language within the contract that formerly, um, we did not have. Uh, it actually gives the chief significant more control of the department, generally speaking. Um, the only real give to the police department is, uh, is in salary on this, uh, which is desperately needed to bring the police department back in line with the surrounding communities. Um, and I ask that you approve this going forward. Um, if there anything else, I have Amir to answer the questions. Stay with.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
I got a question. I know previously you were with the F O P, and now we changed to the P O A, uh, A M?
That is correct. Um, the, the police officers' union used to be Fraternal Order of Police, and somewhere along the way, it was switched to, uh, Police Officers Association of Michigan.
When did that?
I don't know what year it was. You guys know if you have?
Within the last ten years, I believe it was before my time.
Yeah, I think it was.
Five, six years ago.
Five, approximately. Just another bargaining union, basically. It's also very well-respected one in, uh, in Michigan, essentially.
All right. So, the statement that says additional cost of two seventeen thousand per year over five years ranging from, ranging between four eighteen thousand and one fourteen. Can you explain that? What does that mean?
So what this means is that, uh, on an average, this is a five-year contract. The fire that we concluded before was a four-year contract. So this contract will end September of two thousand twenty-nine. So it's a five-year contract. Uh, and in this, uh, we have varying, uh, increases in different years. So the, the biggest increase is in the first year, and then it, uh, goes down. Uh, so that's why the difference from four eighteen to one fourteen, but on an average, this is an annual increase of two thousand, two hundred and seventeen thousand over five years. So every year, on an average, uh, over five years, it's two seventeen.
So over five years, it's going to go on million?
Yes. It's going to be a little more than a year.
But it is also a five-year contract, so it's spread out over those five years, uh, which is beneficial to the city to be able to predict our next five years with the police, essentially, the police department.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Was it always a five-year contract?
No.
So how come it's a five-year contract?
Because that gives us a longer stability and it, yeah, because over the last two, three years, the increase is not as much as at the beginning. So it gives us a chance to make it more stable.
It was done by design, Councilman. It was done by design.
Sure, I, I think five-year contracts, uh, essentially is a good thing, uh, you know, you get to do it for five years at least. So we just, that's, we're offering and honoring our officers, uh, top-notch, trying to match with the other city, and, uh, you know, we will accept, uh, the, because I know this is time to increase everything, increasing in this society. But, uh, at the same time, we're, you know, hope you guys, uh, continue your professional service, please the community, you know, this money's gonna come from the community, uh, their tax money, and, uh, you guys keep up your professionalism and carry on the duty and respect each other, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, union president here to make say a few words, if you may.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, everyone of council. Um, we just wanted to say a few words. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for their support of this police department. Um, very rarely in, in police departments do you get across the board support from every member of city council as a police officer, and we currently have that. Um, you, this department has kind of been a pivotal moment where we've kind of changed and we've been moving towards more modern police practices. We've become more integrated with the community, um, and we've kind of been, had a lot of expenditures. You guys have been bringing us into the twenty-first century, um, with both equipment, with vehicles, um, with just tools to kind of help us keep the community safe and help protect you more. Um, we also want to thank Chief Altehery, um, for his support, um, his experience. He picked right up where the last chief left off. He brings us a lot of experience from a very large city, um, and it's sometimes it's nice to have an outside view on the department that has otherwise been pretty close off. What this contract does, we've been working pretty well with the city and coming to, uh, some common grounds here, and this will help us really keep the community safe. I understand that's what you expect of your police department. Um, you know, you've had concerns as of late that have been brought to us, and they've been addressed, as, as they should be. Um, our job and our primary purpose for being here is safety. So we want to be able to continue to keep the community safe, and this contract is one of the last pieces to kind of allow us to be one of the premier police departments in the state of Michigan. Um, retention and attraction of new quality police officers has been an issue as of late. We've lost recently four or five really good pieces of police officers to other agencies, um, simply because they need to go help provide for their family elsewhere. The financial implications of this contract will allow us to recruit and keep good quality police officers that are just very interested in staying here, keeping the community safe. We love going to events like the, the Labor Day Festival. Um, we like being out there, and there's a touch a truck event at the fire department. We're happy to go out and just, we like being part of the community. This will allow us to bring more people in that also wants to be part of that community and to help keep everyone safe and do everything that needs to be done, so make this a, it's a really cool place to live.
Oh, well, thank you. So last, last, uh, city council meeting, we had a discussion of the police chief. None of you were here, uh, none of you was here, but I think some of you watched the meeting. So this, this, uh, contract is coming in a very critical time when there's very big disappointments in the community about some, some issues that arose lately regarding the, you know, issue of stealing cars at night. Uh, almost every night there's an issue, there's an incident.
Absolutely.
People were, I mean, if you see at least the social media, not everybody goes on the social media, but they are very, very disappointed, and the trust that we tried to build between the community and the police department basically was destroyed by a single video that was released.
Absolutely.
And while we know that this job comes with a lot of risk, and we appreciate your job, and we thank you for everything you do, uh, but it's expected that you will come across some serious situations where you have to be careful, but you have to ask for assistance, and it's the most pressing issue now for the community is car theft, you know, there's, this is a big issue now.
Absolutely.
Uh, so I'm sure it's in your priorities, police chief, and you, you guys, all of you, and it's very annoying to us. Uh, so if we can, you know, uh, put more efforts to control this issue, like you said, we approved the cameras that you asked for, you know, all around the city, approved by new cars, tasers, everything you asked for, we approved. So we expect in return that we control this, uh, serious safety issue that we have in the community. And, um, we're always, in every event, I advocate for the police department, and I support you, and I always tell the people that the police is here to protect you, not to punish you or penalize you. So this is an issue. Time during school dismissals, another issue for the speeding and reckless driving. We expect you to be around schools at that time. Um, and I always drive when I take my kids from school and see a lot of crazy stuff happening from teenagers around that time. So these are the things that I'm sure you guys discuss it on a daily basis, but we need to see significant improvement so we can tell the community, you know, here's, they are doing better, we are, you know, the statistics shows that we are doing better than before. And, uh, and I mean, we, we, we have, we are, all of us, I think we agree that you deserve more, and we need to, um, attract more police officers by giving them better salaries and benefits. That's something that, a, a, as much as we can afford, we will do, uh, but, uh, hopefully we can hear some good news, you know, and, uh, assure the community that they are safe and, and, uh, they should trust their police, uh, department and police officers.
Absolutely. And this, you should not hold yourself to a lower standard because of any reason. You should hold us to the highest of standards, and absolutely, if there's an issue or there's a problem, um, I, I appreciate it being addressed with either myself or with the chief. Um, and it has been addressed, you know, a concern was brought to us, it was addressed promptly. Um, there's been additional training, the, you know, the, the people involved have been spoken to, um, that, that shouldn't be an issue again.
Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, the chief that might want to say a few words in regards to this as well.
Yeah, I'm not a union president, like my gift, uh, obviously here was, they was doing a great job. I think we had, um, you know, coming from New York, in Hamtramck, there's some things I wanted to, to address and hopefully advance the department, make it better. That's what we're here for, I mean, that's what I was hired to do, see what the issues are and make it better. They've been very supportive in that. Um, there's some things we did talk about, having a lot more flexibility when it comes to be moving people around, and we had those all thefts, if they happen in certain time, it's easy for me to move someone from, let's say, days to, to nights. So those are things that are important because it makes us keep people safe, and we all have, I think, uh, at the end of the day, we have understanding, um, uh, we all have the same common goal, just to keep people safe. That's why we put that uniform and shield on, and it's something I stress about is that we all, regardless of your chief also, we have a right to the public, and that's all that we took to serve the public and make sure that we're doing whatever we can to keep you safe. It means I have to work at nights, or days, or come on a weekend, or do, you know, extra, um, you know, activities or initiatives. It's all about keeping people safe, and I'm very proud of these men and women here. I know that it's, uh, something that I was, I was very bothered with when I first saw it on, on Facebook and spoke to you to the person that posted it, uh, and also we have here some detectives, fish, this way, you know, some issues with cases, I know, that was blown up, but like I said, a lot, there, sometimes we, we want to address those issues, and we can, but at the same token, I just want to say, they, they were doing outstanding work, um, probably, you know, the K nine officers, the patrol, we, you know, our new officer here, they do a lot of great work, and we just want to make sure that, um, they get, you know, the right pay, uh, right, what's right for them, and, you know, what they do for us. And then, and then, I'm a resident too. I'm expecting that, to make sure that my family's safe, so, uh, and, um, I just, anything, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for that, uh, you know, you made, you set it right, you know, to, you know, what it means to be here. I think sometimes we need to hear it as officers, because we have to be held accountable, and that's why I try to be transparent. When we talk about numbers, we introduce con stat, I know it's something new here, but we want to make sure that we are transparent and we're held accountable, at the same token, uh, be more understanding of the, their job, which their job is very difficult, challenging, and, um, I just want to see, you know, support, uh, these, these amazing men and women, and obviously if there's issues there, um, you know, we'll, we'll address it. So thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Councilman Hassan?
I didn't study. I need a, our finance director, please. You guys can have a seat. Okay, so five years contract, I never approved it myself, last sixteen years. So what's thing make you to agree with the five years concerns? Did you read the, first of all, did you read the last contact?
Yes.
How, how, how many years it was?
Three years.
Three years. So why you are going the five years?
Because we are giving a long-term plan to the police department with a, you know, clear, uh, pay scales for five years.
Well, I understand, but it's three years.
Because after three years, you again go into negotiations.
Well, there is, again, good, you have a chance to good or bad, both sides.
Right.
So I know, I work five years, I don't have no option.
Right, but then, in this, uh, uh, five-year program, the last three, uh, the last two years, the increase that we have in, in the, uh, plan is three percent each year. So I think it gives us a lot more flexibility, both for the police department as well as the city.
How many percent this, this time is going?
How many persons?
Yeah, three person, what percentage is going now?
So it's going to be fifteen percent?
Okay, three to fifteen, it's not far.
Right.
The day difference?
Yes, because we are, the problem is that right now, our salaries compared to the neighboring departments, we are losing.
Compared to the neighbor?
Neighboring.
Luxurious too.
No, no.
You think this?
Not, not currently, Councilman. We, we had luxurious.
It's always luxurious pension.
Of the past, sir. Uh, they're in line now.
Not right now. I'm talking about the, the, the salaries right now, where are we losing our people? We're losing our people to all the communities, all the departments nearby, and our salaries, uh, compared to their salaries are much lower, and that's why we are not able to retain. We bring in police officers, we train them for three, four months, that's a lot of money where they're not productive, and then they leave, go somewhere else because they get a much higher salary. So you had to address that salary gap upfront. You cannot delay that.
High salary has the high rates too. There's no, it's, uh, okay, I got it, uh, Mr. Uh, manager, we discussed previously bargaining committee, we should have the elected officials sit up here. You never request for it, and I don't know any elected official knows when it was happening. And I didn't get an email for when it was second.
Councilman, I can address that.
Yeah.
Uh, let me, let me first. Let me, let me first address your first concern about the long contract. The long contract is to give the city, the city to ability to actually plan its budget and its forecast a little bit farther out. We wanted that for stability purposes. I mean, that, that was by design, we wanted that. And then second, in regards to a negotiation committee, I mean, this city over the years has had them, hasn't had them, I mean, it's went back and forth.
I wasn't.
Yeah, I know, absolutely, I'm recognizing that we have had them, but there's also been plenty where we haven't had them. I did mention it during closed session, litigation and contract negotiations. I did mention it to mayor and council. I believe you had left candidly early that night, you had something going on, I apologize for that. But the rest of the council did indeed hear that. And I've tried absolutely to keep you in the loop. No one really expressed an interest in being part of it. You know, so, I mean, we, we did our best. We presented what I think is a very fair contract to the council and I, and I asked that you approve it.
So there's the lots of diversity problem going on. We previously had the diversity training, while Michigan State took our city and right after that, we have a lots of diversity training due to, there's a lots of problem inside the police department. We have to correct all those things. Mr. Chief, you just told some of the issue we try to address what we can, there is what should not be can. No question. If any issue in the police department need to address, it need to address. They have to follow the chain of common. If anybody don't follow the chain of common, you have anything going on, cannot address the issue. Nobody has the power than these bodies, no question. So if we approve, we expect that. I don't want anybody to show the muscle. And it's, it's nobody. They're wearing city paid tax money dress. After the dress, they're nobody. So when they wear the dress, they have to respect the city, they have to respect the common, they have to do their job. They're doing their job, but there is a lots of complaint is coming. Even the last night, I saw the, three police car in the one place, fifteen minutes. There is nothing, no issue. So by that time, who is patrolling the other side of the, very close to Carpenter, west side of the city? I'm not complaining that. But there is the, it's from residents. There's the safety concern right now, it's serious safety concern. So if you says the five-year contracts, if you already said the elected body, already you addressed to them and if they don't have any interest to sit up with you, I don't have no problem with that. But I don't know, I never get the email. The mayor knows, the mayor never told me or never showed us interest. So that case, again, we'll approve it, increase no issue. But we expect the, to respect the chain of common and better service, better safety for these residents. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
This one's a reply to...
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just, yeah, so you mentioned, I know there's, so we're applying here in Hamtramck Police Department, precision policing, meaning that where the crime is, that's where we're going to focus on, right? So auto theft, like the mayor mentioned, something a big deal. So we have a plan of place, we have a school plan of place. That's something we're initiating, and I think these men and women are going to follow through and, you know, perform the best of their ability. And then, at the end of the day, if you don't have a plan of all, we're not just going to be officers running around and distracting for nothing. We have a purpose and we're going to set that purpose and that's something I discussed with Faye and fully supportive of it. And Faye's also, he's very humble, he's also educator. So he understands the importance of precision policing and combating crime effectively in conjunction with collecting the data.
No problem.
Yeah, so thank you so much, councilman Hassan.
We have a very good, good police officer, good reputation of our police. But couple of, you have a lawsuit also, that's all we have to do.
And I think, like I made, mayor and so, diversity training, I was invited here years back when, I think, councilman, at that time, I don't know, he was very active in the community, I think he was a councilman at that time. He was, yeah, we invited him here and actually gave a three-day course on diversity training. Some of the officers attended it. So that's something we can do even in-house, we even need to pay or have someone there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, and that's the reason I spoke, why is it five, you know, years contract, like councilman Hassan said. But I did look into the contract and I know our department for a long time. We have a turnout for a while. And it's, it's a pay. You know, people will come in, you know, get trained, some of them, we might train them for a year or two. They will find a different city that pays them more. If I, if I wasn't there for stuff, I'll do the same thing. So I think we're, you know, and I love this contract. I think it will be, you know, equal with other cities beside, you know, that's around about the city of Hamtramck. And we might have officers that might stay here for a long time. And I noticed there's a couple over here that's been here for three, five, six years, I remember. So having these raises in this new agreement, definitely I think more people will stay in this department. I have seen so much turnout. You know, some of them are friends are, and uncle and county sheriff are doing way better. They wish, you know, we have changed this contract a while back when, you know, when we took the body here. So I do agree that, as you have mentioned, that, you know, we do want more police presence in our city of Hamtramck. You know, I grew up in this city, you know, before you do something stupid, you have to think twice. Because, you know, police presence was always around. And I wish hopefully, you know, after we, you know, approve this resolution and this contract, you know, you guys, you know, please be out there more. So like I said, for me to do something stupid, there was always a cop somewhere in any street. So hopefully you guys will do that, continue doing, you know, what you guys are doing. You guys are doing good, just keep our citizens, cities safe, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to point out one more thing, that the cost of retaining officers in constantly, constantly training is significantly high. I mean, I, I don't even know how many we lost in the past year, but I venture to say probably ten or more. Every time we bring on a new officer, that's essentially four months, we don't have use of that officer while they're in basic FDO training. They don't even count towards man counter during that time, let alone all the excess and other training and all the money it cost us to even get them on the force in the first place. The countless hours of the background investigations we spend to make sure they, they're right for the job, the psychological exam, the physical exam, I mean, that all costs money. So even though we are deciding to invest in our police department, in the officers themselves, we also are saving by the fact that we'll be retaining officers now and potentially getting quality officers coming in. Not to mention, the constant turnover creates an experience issue. You know, if, if you have a completely young police department, it's not going to run as efficient if you have veteran police officers that have been around the block a few times, know what they can and can't do. Let's face it, younger officers are more prone to cause a problem than per se a veteran officer that's seen and knows exactly what to do. So the experience levels are going to start to increase. Not that they're terrible now, but it will be better. You know, there's a lot of hidden costs in this that we're not going to see, the potential that we're saving on lawsuits. You know, the, the stability within the department makes difference, it makes a significant difference and we can't put a price tag on that.
So, Mr. Chair?
Councilman Mohit first? You know, let's try and think, you, I just may say one thing about Mr. Hassan, I say that I was not aware about adding any of us to the negotiation. Maybe you did, I left last meeting, I don't stay for closed session, so probably I don't know, I was not aware of it. But would be good to communicate it with email, maybe then, that's how, you know, nobody can blame that, you know, we don't see it or can't have it. I think that was a good idea to have, I mean, any of us or anyone interest to be there. Secondly, as mayor mentioned, all of those things, and we was, police chief was bombarded by all of us in last meeting because there's many concerns from the community, many issues, many complaints that come to us. You know, sometimes they don't feel like they're respected, you know, person when police stop them or don't treat them the way they should get treated. So it is a small, small community and I know you guys doing good job, but keep in mind that, you know, this is a community based, community, very small community, we all know each other, we all see each other. Five years contract, basically I support it. I think it's not a bad thing to have a five years contract to secure people and definitely secure them for their job too. And union has to secure your position, but doesn't mean you can't follow the chain of command. You know, your job is secure because I'm an union employee, doesn't mean you don't have to listen to your supervisor or your boss, you know, yeah, that has to be there. There's the professionalism comes from that position. And you guys should be ideal for the community. Once upon before, when I moved to Michigan, I always hear good things about the Hamtramck Police Department. That was kind of taken away from last few years, so I hope that will bring it back. You know, it's not only money, I know people are concerned, their tax money, you know, accepting it, but we can show them that this is worth it, this is for good for you and this for the reason that we accept the contract. This is it, so now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hassan?
Yeah, so like, Mr. Manager, after this agreement, still police officer going to have a better chance somewhere else they're going to go. We cannot keep, you know, stay here. It's not the people going, going, going. It's the thing is, young generation police officer come, maybe make a, as a better police department than the veterans police officer too. We cannot disagree with that. So as a city, whatever we can afford to given them, that's all we are giving them. So it's up to them, they can stay here or they go over there. It's not the contact, like making him to stay all the time, it's not true though. It's the thing, they come, they see the, how city is safe, everybody think about their life. And a small city, not too many crimes, not too many dangerous situation happening all the time. And they should, they may stay here. It's not the one, they come and go, come and go for the money, it's not the money. So again, it's good, like a police, our police department, no matter what we sometime criticize, is doing better job than lots of other cities. But still, as an elected official, we have to say, some of the concern from the residents, we have to address, that's all.
All right, thank you. So I'll get back to you, Mr. Manager. So our community is considered safe compared to other communities. Most of the criminals are from outside, not from our community. Therefore, we have to be strict on them, we have to put a limit to all the crimes that happens in our community. And now, it doesn't mean that in the past, these crimes didn't used to happen. We know the statistic, around three hundred forty-five thousand car gets stolen every year in the United States. So we have our share from that number. But today, this time, with the social media, everything goes viral. So, so it makes things seem more serious and dangerous than it is. But we should utilize that to improve our response. You know, I, I was reading some comments, one person mentioned that he reported a stolen laptop or something. He told us, the police officers to look at the cameras, they did not. So he went and he did their job. He asked the neighbors for the cameras and stuff and he brought the videos to the police department. I think that's one downfall that we should watch for. I mean, if there's something like that, we should put, you know, go an extra step to, to find all the factors that can help us track the criminal and find, you know. I know it's not a big crime, but it could be, you know, very important to the owner of the computer. He could have some serious information inside his laptop. So we should consider, I know the response time is very good. I see when we have a problem, a problem at the clinic, we call and they come within two minutes. So that's very good. But we should, then the follow-up is something that we should always focus on. So, thank you. I think Mr. Morputam wants to say something about this topic, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. For this, thank you, Mr. City Manager and our financial advisor. We create, we get the contract for five years, it's okay. Those money coming from one, one point two million dollars, coming from our city. Residents pay for this money, I don't pay from my pocket, nobody pay from the pocket. Residents deserve much better service and respect with the resident. We give up whatever the common for the police, we give you the vehicles, equipment, street camera, whatever come for the police, we give them. But we want a community, ourselves, we want a best return from the police. And police deserve this better salary, they put their life on the risk. I hope whatever incident happened in past, we're going to overcome those things. We can tell our people, we try our best to do the upgrade of police department, equipmentally and financially. They will do their best job in future. Everywhere, they're doing phenomenal job, but still there was some room for improvement. And we like to see this improvement, community like to see this improvement. It's a very rough time, we are approving this contract. We are the small community, we have a mosque, church and shop. The people who have affected their life, first thing they coming to us. But if police did a thousands positive things, they don't give you the good comment. But one negative thing, they put us on the spot. Please, I suggest you and I urge you, do your best with your safety and do the community the respect and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I think with that, we come to, to the end of the discussion and we need to focus from now on on how to minimize our spending so we can afford this, you know, additional funds that we have to and expenses. So you want to say something?
I'm just hoping within five years, hopefully you guys will still be here, to renew this contract.
I'm committed, councilman, I'll be here five years, at least.
Hopefully most of you.
I hope to do another twenty.
Thank you so much, thank you. So I think we can vote now.
Councilman Sidman?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilman Murphai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Alcimari?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-118 approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, we appreciate that. By all means, hold us accountable, if you have issues, bring to the chief and he's, him and I have some great communication, so we'll work harder and we'll be out there as needed. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
See you guys in the next five years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilman, thank you very much.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
See, we are nice, we are full, everything, but would we ask the residents to approve our salary increase?
Let it go, we'll come to bed for you, we'll face the rest for you, baby.
All right, thank you so much. So we move now to next resolution, 2024-118, approving the contract for the general liability policy.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I do have our controller here, but I can speak on it as well. Every year we come to you for liability insurance. Past few years, it's been very, very high and we've had very, very little options. Let's face it, no one wanted to insure us. Well, this year it has changed and we managed to secure another co- from a very good insurance company. And I'm happy to report that our controller has brought us a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars under budget on this. Now, mind you, there is another fifty thousand out of that that's going towards our self-insurance, but we are far below our intended budget, our original budget on this. So we didn't spend a lot on last resolution, but this one just saved us a lot.
So this year, you know, just like in the past, we use the broker to, you know, get insurance for the city. And the last couple of years, we've not had much options. We basically, one insurance company that would quote, the rest would not even quote us. This year, out of eight, we got two quotations, six other declined. But the more important part is that the second quotation which came in this year, we were trying to get them into quote for us in the past. They did not feel that the risk was, you know, more than what they wanted to go with. This is basically... This is basically a very different insurance company. It's basically a municipal insurance company. So, it's a Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, which is called MMRMA. And they just do municipalities, cities, counties, you know, villages and, you know, other agencies. So, they have no other commercial insurance risk like the other companies have. Because with Liberty Mutual or companies like that, who are general insurance and who cater for all kinds of risk and liability. They change their premium based on their experience, which has nothing at times to do with the city or the area that we are in. They look at a global, you know, view on insurance. Whereas this Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, basically just looks at the municipality risks and based on that, it provides a coverage. So, what it does is it gives us a lot more stability in our insurance program compared to the volatility that we've seen in the past. And that is one of the reasons why we are recommending MMRMA to be our insurance next year.
Mr. Chair. Mayor, so I know we are saving. Is it the same policy that we have, the same thing?
It's actually better than last year because last year, if you remember, we had a much higher, the year before that, we had a much higher limit on our policies, which we reduced last year because the premium was more than 750, or almost 750,000 dollars, if we kept the same coverage.
I'm saying the coverage.
So, what, we reduced it from 20 million to 5 million. And this year, with this policy, with MMRMA, we are going to 10 million. So, we've been almost doubled our coverage with MMRMA in terms of overall risk coverage.
Okay. And my question is 50,000. That means this will be the whole body of insurance coverage?
Right. How MMRMA works is that you have a deductible. And that deductible, what the normal insurance companies do is that they, whenever we file a claim, they will then request for that deductible first and then make the payment. What MMRMA does differently is that they request us to pay the portion of the deductible upfront. And that they keep in their fund so that whenever we do file a claim, they would use that amount first and then get the rest of the big.
So, that means the deductible is 50,000 dollars?
Yes. Well, no, the deductible, no, no. And no, it all depends on different claims. But as far as the overall, like for the last year, last, last year deductible was 100,000. What we did this year was that in order to reduce the overall premium, we increased the deductible to 500,000 and increased the coverage to 10 million. So, that is why we have seen. So, the deductible is going to be very depending on which claim we are filing. And this 50,000 is like a fund that they create for us in which this money goes. So, again, that means, to me, there's always claims. Any city you go, there's gonna be.
So, reality, it's not, we didn't save 141. We actually saved only some dollars.
Right. Right.
But we don't lose that. But we don't lose that.
Not, not the claims.
If you don't have a claim, so how are we gonna go with it?
Yeah, we can come back.
We can come back.
Yeah. If we, if we move from, if we move from MMRMA to some other agency, then yes, they will be able to give us that.
Is the deductible 500,000 dollars last time?
The deductible last time was 100,000.
And this is 500,000?
500,000.
So, is anything cover, 500,000 will cover all the deductible?
Yeah. 500,000 will cover the deductible that we have to pay. So, somebody, somebody files a claim for 2 million or 5 million dollars or 10 million dollars, we pay the first 500 and then.
We're only getting ready with you.
We've been doing pretty good. Let's keep it a metric.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-118 approved.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution 2024-119, approving the Michigan Department of Treasury Local Returns Grant Award.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is an additional gift from the Department of Treasury towards our pension obligation. It was unexpected. We did tell council about it before, but this is the result of it. Now, I'm just asking for permission to sign to exact.
That's the 100,000?
Right. So, this will go, this amount will go directly to MERS. It won't come to the city. They'll pay directly to MERS and it'll go into our liability. If you remember, last year, we received about 16 million.
16?
16.7 million. So, it went into the liability. And so, our liability coverage, we were at 42 percent, so it went to over 60 percent. And that was the aim of the state, was to bring all the communities which are below 60 percent to the 60 percent level. And in this particular case, this was a secondary, you know, grant that they did for all the communities which have a certain percentage this time. What is the cost of your MERS expenditure compared to your general fund revenue? And they wanted to bring it to a certain level.
All right. We can vote now.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hood?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-119 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2024-120, approving first reading and setting the date for the public hearing and second reading of Hamtramck Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment, Chapter 155.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is simply the first reading. This is the amendments to the previous zoning that council wished to have reconsidered. They were subsequently reconsidered and sent back up to with, I believe, exactly what council and mayor had hoped for. That's about it, really.
So, the minister viewer could make sure we got what we wanted. Because we were supposed to approve it last time, but we didn't know that we could without sending it back. But we found out, you know, why we were at the meeting, so.
That is correct.
It was the last resolution about?
It's about the LED light and the projected signs. Where, where does it say the?
Oh, okay. That one is the one, two.
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel here if you have any specific questions.
So, make sure it's eight and 12, you know?
Well, they only be 16 sometimes.
In the report on the proposed zoning updates.
Yeah. So, it's eight, four candles. That's what we have been on. And then?
On page two, it.
Projected signs, quote, script.
Quote, scripty. Yes.
All right. Well, I'd be able to still work more on what's going on.
It is already a double of the log size, so.
All right.
It gives us more room to provide approvals for people without asking them to pay for variance fees and things like that, so.
All right. Thank you. So, we can vote on this.
Uh, Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-128 approved.
Thank you. You said one, oh yeah, 128. I thought you said 128. All right. Resolution 2024-121, approving agreement between the City of Hamtramck and the Hamtramck Parks Conservancy.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is gonna be tie-balled to the resolution right after that, of purchase of 2926 Council. The Hamtramck Parks Conservancy has agreed to half-fund the city's purchase of a piece of property. In order to be able to do that, we need an agreement with Parks Conservancy. A few things that this solidifies is that once we eventually do get the DPS building constructed, the Parks Conservancy will have their home base within that building, which is very beneficial to the city to do. Second, we're gonna continue to maintain the landscaping in the park for some time. In the interim for that, they're paying us the 200,000 towards the purchase. They are also knocking over the old reserve garage after this is complete, which brings us in line with the master plan for Veterans Park, which would be hopefully just in time to repave that, because as council and mayor knows, we gotta, we're getting a grant from the state to do that. So, the timing of all this is working out very for us, and I ask that you approve this, and we can move forward to next.
My partner Zach wrote the contract, so we approve the contract.
All right.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-121 approved.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 2024-122, approving purchase of 2926 Councils.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, as I just stated, this is the purchase of the property to supplement the property we already have into, for future home of the EPS building. It is quite necessary to have this extra space. We are still in the rough design, but we, for at least the short term, we'll be moving the reserves over to this garage that is currently existing there. We intend in the future to house things such as our salt dome, our rocks, and all the, all the basic supplies we use for the city, which is kind of difficult right now to store. But with this additional property, it'll make it much more easier for DPW to store those items on-site. It is a good move, in my opinion. It's adjacent to the property we already have, and I think will be just what we need.
And under the budget impact, you wrote, then the other, $200 will be taken from the general funds. $200. You mean 200,000. But you put 200,000.
Oops. Sorry about that typo. I believe it was late on, but I was trying to.
That's okay. I forgot my, I'll talk today. All right. So, we can go in and, I'm gonna take him 200.
I asked the council approve it for the correct amount and not 200, because I'll be in trouble.
Where does it say 200? On the resolution?
Budget, under the budget impact.
Oh, the budget impact. Oh, I see. Are you fixing that?
Um, not logged in.
Oh, okay. I'll do it. Are we ready to vote?
Yes. There's a link.
I believe the resolution is correct, councilman.
The resolution is correct.
It's just the narrative, the notes for her to see.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-122 approved.
All right. Thank you. Next one, Resolution 2024-123, approving the purchase of the 2023 EQ26702 camera chassis for Transit 350 van. Sounds familiar. So, this is revisiting us. I don't know.
Tell me about that part of the issue.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have John here for your pleasure on this topic. I have a feeling he's gonna have a tough road. Since the last meeting, Mr. De Angelis has had an opportunity to speak with several councilmen and explain a little bit more in-depth of what the intent of this truck is. And I believe he's here to follow up on that a little bit. It'll be interesting to hear what we're gonna do with it exactly.
Mr. Chair, I think John took a couple days off, went for sales classes. Now I'm about to back. I'll see.
He's healed now.
Just elaborate more on this, the van. I don't know if I did a good enough job explaining it last time. Some people thought it was just a van. It's not just a van. It's a van that's actually been outfitted with everything but the electronic portion of what we already own. So, to add on that, one of the main reasons we need this, which I did not know at the time when my department asked about this van, was our main sewer down in Cashmere. It's 30 feet deep, about five foot tall. To get that cleaned in itself, it is full. And it's kind of a trouble point for Chris, who operates our Jetter truck. Everything's pointing back to Cashmere. It looks like a lot of our problems are focused around off that main sewer in Cashmere. We have the talent, Chris and his partner, in the Jetter truck, to actually work in the depth of that sewer, 30 feet down. To try to get somebody to do that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars, and would take a long, long time. Our guys are confined space, they can work in confined space. Having that truck is essential to it. We need people to operate, be in that truck. Why we have guys down 30 foot down in the hole with monitors on for air levels, pulling out large items that they can't suck up through the jet truck. They have to bring a tripod out and bring it up. So, one of the purposes that this truck's gonna be used for, it's gonna save the city a lot of money, is that Cashmere sewer. That's had to clean from the freeway all the way to Conan. So, Chris looked down, it is 30 feet deep. There's piles of dirt, even when you look down from, from the road surface down. So, he knows it's bad. He's got a lot of history here with the city. It's never been cleaned. So, everybody have talked to that sewer line. It's never been cleaned. Most of our sewers are about one-third full with sand and debris. That one probably got, never been cleaned. Who knows how much it's down there, but it is full. This would definitely be a savings to the overall water fund, because if we outsource this, we're gonna be in hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. De Angelis, I hope you will be diligent, because on last purchase, we all trust on you. Now you say they can't bring truck to the street because it's too high. Then you have to trim all the street sewer. You have to trim all the streets to sweep the street. So, whatever he's saying, we trust on him. We believe you take this seriousness. I mean, if you're diligent to make sure.
Yeah. And we're trimming trees like crazy right now, too.
Well, then it's gonna take it all season. We get it dirty.
It's, I'm done south of Hallbrook. We got most everything trimmed over there. And we started on the, off of the Conan side, cleaner Marianne, doing Belmont, tolling Ridge. So, we are getting some of the streets that have been trouble shots are getting cleaned. We've been putting guys out. I'm light-handed still, guys. I still need, I do still need some more men out there to do it. But we are hitting them as, as it comes in.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, in councilman, they're not just trimming trees when they go and do that. That was kind of an unexpected result of that. But when they go out and shut down a street, not only are they trimming trees, but they're bringing the Jetter truck over to do the sewers at that time. They're painting the streets. I mean, they're basically attacking everything in that street in one shot. So, it's going a little bit slow, but once they leave, everything's been addressed, including filling the puddles. They're trying to, you know, focus on just completely shutting it down one time, doing everything we can, and then moving on to the next. So, that's why it's a little bit slow. But next season should go a lot smoother, because the trees will be trimmed at that point. Everything will be blasted out at one time, and most everything will painted. So, but it's a good thing at the end of the day.
Yeah. We've been marking, as we clean the streets, we mark it on a map, what, when it was done, what month, what year. And we close that street down. We trim the trees, we clean the sewers, we do the puddles, and then we sweep it. So, trying to be a little bit more, for going on that, to get, get it out of the way so I don't have to interrupt the president's survey times.
Okay. So, it looks like you need, you need to come in and come. You don't want me to come again?
I haven't been up here too much in so far.
Well, this is not his fault that the council was, was confirmed.
So, this is the special camera, right?
No, we have the camera. We have, we have the expensive part. We have 120,000 dollars with electronics that can, we actually would deliver all this electronics to this company, and they will install it in the outfitted cabinet space, the desk space, the monitors that are already in this unit. So, to buy an outfitted van is like 300 grand. Doing it this way. Doing it this way, the time you add what we've already spent in electronics, and you add the purchase of this van, and we're going to be at around 240, 237,000. So, it's still cheaper doing it this way. We save six, city roughly about 60 grand doing it ourselves, because we took the middle man out. I'm taking a rate to the installer, sending our equipment to them, they're actually installing it. Normally, you cannot buy the van this way. Another city ordered this van and didn't take delivery of it, so they're stuck with the van.
Where's the van now?
In Texas.
You better bring it to school last night.
They're actually delivering it for that price.
You gonna give us a night to, you know, eat up your...
We can all go. I can get a raise to go, man. I need a vacation.
Okay, I think we can go on.
All right, so, let's see, the council decides now. From now on, that we are spending millions of dollars more than the previous years, you have to be careful of our spending.
And this will be out of the water fund, too.
Yeah, anything. So, after, we see every resident's now complaining about increased tax, thousands of dollars. So, I'm expecting each year that we have millions of dollars more in the property tax. Because last year was only 750 increase in the property tax. But when I see everyone, like, thousand dollars extra, we're expecting millions of dollars. I hope we'll see it next year.
Mr. Mayor, I wish it worked like that, but steadily will knock us down to lower our mill rate.
State will take more than that, wasn't we thinking?
Yeah, but if we made 750 last year, and this year, everything will top. You know, with hundreds of our residents, maybe thousands.
You'll see our mill rate will actually go down, is what will happen.
The property won't up, property ban, so that makes more trouble.
There's another mill on the ballot also, so who knows?
Yeah, maybe the next, the next thing on the ballot is to ask the people if they want to decrease in the property tax.
No, the mill on the ballot isn't our city, it's a county one, so.
I know. Okay, so, you can go ahead and vote on this one.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmieri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Lefai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-123 approved.
Thank you. Good luck. More than four. So, the next one, Resolution 224-124, approving agreement for the development and sale of 3351 Ramus to Abram and Jarrash.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel here and the purchaser to speak on this, predominantly Isabel, if the purchaser wants to say something, but happy to move along another one of his lots.
This is an application that CED has reviewed for the sale of the property at 3351 Ramus, and it's going to involve the combination of making a same parcel to expand their residential dwelling and alleviate some street parking issues, because they'll have a garage unit, carport built. So, we're happy to present this to you, and if you have questions, we do have the representative of the applicant who's been working on the renderings and everything for us. So, we recommend you approve.
Mr. Chair, just to inform yourself and council and the rest there that this lot's owned by the city, it's been sitting there for a long time. Applicant, applied for this lot, took them a long time to bring up paperwork and, you know, plans on, you know, what he wants to do. And then finally, we came to conclude, you know, it's taken too long. There's another applicant that wants to develop this slot, and they reached out to us, and I'm happy they're here to make this happen. As we know, Ramus is a tight street that they have to park more on the curb, so they don't get their mayor's head. So, for them to make this project happen, for them, it will benefit to their residential and also add another space for somebody else to park over there. So, I hope my colleagues will approve this tonight. And also, maybe the city saves money keeping it to clean the street.
So, are you planning to make it like, as in, rather than develop as a house?
Well, right now, we have designed a carport, this one there.
Oh.
Hopefully, to maybe extend it all the way to fit more than one car.
Is it right next to your house?
Yeah, so our house is on the left side of the car.
Which is an allowed addition in the zoning ordinance, because it's an expansion of an existing residential dwelling structure.
Okay, that's good.
Make sure next time you place a Ford car, not a Jeep.
CED will let applicants know.
Let the application tell them.
They work hard on it.
That's the mayor's four-year-old people here.
If your applicant puts a car to it.
Not just one, it's a Jeep.
All right. So, we can go ahead and...
Councilman Lefai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmieri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
And I apologize, I didn't get who motioned in second then.
I motioned, I think, first.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, so now, the age, date.
Approving invoice registry.
Yeah, so approving the invoice register dating September 10, 2024. Need a...
Motion. Second.
Right, discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a question to, to a mayor. A mayor. So, I noticed for Hennessy, we always approve their fee. I noticed there's multiple fees here for Hennessy, with high numbers. So, I'm just kind of curious, what, you know, what are they for, even though we approved during the project?
Right, so, when you approve the project, that means you're approving the contract that we need to pay Hennessy for their services.
Okay.
These are bills, once we get the bills, we verify them, and then we approve them for payment. So, this is basically the approval we've already given for each and every contract. So, these are related to different projects that are going on in the city, and we then make the payments once we verify them, these bills.
Mr. Chair, well, I know that there's, there's one on, what is this, on eight tuning to on August for 91,000, and then another one on the same date for 73,000, and then the rest goes by 6,000, 7,000, 3,000, 14,000, 400. So, I'm just curious, and another 50,000. So, and it doesn't really tell us what is it for 100%. So, even though we approved, I know we approved for 90,000 ones, and then ones for 70,000.
So, these are all different projects that are going on in the city? So, in some of them, the reviews that they do, in some of them, they prepare the documents for submission for grants, in some of them, they prepare, you know, the plans, and then in some of them, they're doing the monitoring. So, it's related to different, you know, activities and different projects.
And the bigger the contract, the higher the fee you're going to see?
Yeah.
Because they get a percentage.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Counselman. I'm sorry.
Let me give that example.
I'm sorry.
So, councilman, you down?
Yeah.
So, it's very easy to understand, but then we didn't have the Hennessy, wouldn't have this be. Okay? How, very clear, Hennessy, city has the paper, excuse me, look at me, city has the paper, hand it over to my hand, I hand it over to a state, that is my bill fifty, whatever you're looking at. So, that's all. Like John said, with my contract, three, four paper added, I got more money.
So, Mr. Chair, I got a question to our city manager and John. Why we can't have our own people? Is it not, you do this?
So, Councilman, I mean, I can answer that. I mean, for years on end, the city was significantly understaffed, and, you know, we made a move, I would say, under probably the emergency managers to start with, to basically decimate our staffing elements. I don't, I can't say for certain, but I'm sure at some time in, you know, previous history, we probably did do all this in-house. But, as you know, we're slowly working our way to taking over more and more tasks. We did take back our building department. We took our, well, we had our code, but we took all of it back, you know? I mean, we're working towards our own people doing these things, but candidly speaking, at this point, this is still over our head. Now, I'm not saying that maybe in the future, we can't bring this back in-house, but for at least the time being, Hennessy's doing a pretty good job. You know, everything they bring to this council, it's pretty explanatory and detailed. They're great partners with getting a lot of these grants. Frankly, we wouldn't have got all these grants if we hadn't had them, and I would say it's a very good relationship. Now, in regards to your specific invoices, Councilman, I have these, the day of, all the invoices in hand. You're more than welcome to stop in any time prior to the council meeting and take a peek through them, and happy to show these to you after the meeting, too. I pulled the Hennessy ones out in particular, happy to go through them and just kind of show you what they are. They're pretty much all services rendered as they go, and there's some other stuff mixed in here, but, but I mean, it's a constant. We have so many projects going on in the city with Hennessy for millions and millions of dollars that we're just paying them as we go, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, well, with all this money, why we can't hire somebody's, hold on. Why we can't hire somebody, pay him 100,000 a year, for him to do this work, engineer him, why I'm going to continue doing it in Hennessy? To be honest with you, they're just, it's crazy.
Well, Councilman, keep in mind that, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I think we can hire somebody who's qualified to do this work and pay him 100K, 1,000, where you save a lot of money. And if you talk about grant, we have somebody that writes grant. If we have to hire another person, hard time to write grants, like Hennessy's doing, let's do that. And I guarantee we're going to be saving hundreds of thousands than Hennessy's making. So, don't tell me, well, we have to continue using Hennessy. If you're putting in-house or on this one now, find somebody who's qualified, so they could get paid through the city and do the work. Why I'm paying Hennessy half a million dollars for one project, whoever it is? And to me, this, it's crazy.
I understand, Councilman, what you're saying, but this isn't the work of one person. This is essentially the work of a whole team of people. I mean, we have a full-time person in the city watching the sites at any given day. We have at least three engineers at any given day working on various projects, not to mention all the ancillary support staff they have behind the scenes, but this is literally a whole team of people they have working for us. We would, it would not be one person at 100,000. I'd wish that was the case, but they would be so overwhelmed, they wouldn't be able to keep up. I mean, we'd have to actually get a whole unit for this.
And how did the city do it before?
I can't speak to how they did it decades ago, but we've been farming this stuff out for a long time. The ones we've done so far have been easier to bring in-house, candidly.
And they didn't do it before, that's why we're in the hole we're in.
Yep, that's a very valid point.
Okay, well, can I request, Mayor, that next council meeting, you guys come up with a plan? How many people we need to have? What's the way and the plan for us to have it in-house? There's a lot of parts of the DPW that I'm already bringing back, like, we're doing a lot of our own jetting now. We're bringing, I'm taking it on as I know we can get the manpower and do it effectively. There's other things that we use emergency services for that I believe that we can bring in-house, especially when we get the new property, we have to have site to store, store the pipes, store the materials, have the people ready to, you know, to do some of these things. But on the engineering side, this is oversight, so these are the big projects, a lot of these bigger bills where they say, we're going to get 140,000 for this project. They got guys out there for months. So, if we did bring in some people, we're going to be paying those people probably close to that amount of money. But there is definitely some things that we can bring back.
Yeah, they're also doing the surveying of the sites, I mean, they're drawing out the blueprints, I mean, there's a lot involved in this.
Well, they're getting paid so much money, and they're leaving potholes or on other streets. And that's my point, they're responsible to observe and go back on these streets, and they show they're restoring these streets, but they're not. So, they're getting paid so much money, and they're doing a pleasant job.
So, we are...
And mayor and council is getting blamed from the residents.
Councilman, we are certainly holding all of our contractors more accountable. In fact, one of the contracts, one of the contractors we're using for our, we decided that they're no longer a good fit for us, because we didn't like the work they were doing, and basically, for all intents and purposes, told them, you know, we're not using you again. So, I mean, we're upping the ante on the people we use, and I venture to say it is getting better. It's getting a lot better. Now, there's still going to be issues. I mean, it's a large organization, and we got millions and millions of dollars worth of work going on in the city. You know, we can't catch everything. We're trying. Anytime council or mayor or just even resident brings something to our attention, we try our best to address it, but, I mean, this is a constant work in progress. We've got decades and decades of neglect to our infrastructure, you know? I mean, we're going to, we're going to be going hard and fast for a long time until we can kind of get on par where everything starts to work again.
How many times does the mayor or council mention to you that we're getting calls about these streets not being passed through? It's not a year, it's been years now, and it's still the same crap.
So, Councilman, if I may, the cold patch that they go around and do is never a permanent solution.
A couple months, man.
It's literally only a patch, and unfortunately, the traffic over it just, you know, breaks it up, and we got to do it again. I mean, that's just how it goes with the cold patch. The only real solution is to rip out the street and redo it, and we're trying to do it as fast as we possibly can, but, I mean, we're limited at some point in manpower and funds, for that matter. We don't have unlimited funds to do all of them. I think we're going at warp speed in comparison to what we did in the past. I mean, we're doing a lot. I mean, we just did all, we're almost, we're on the last stretch of Bronback now, we finished off Fleming. I mean, we're ripping the lead service lines like crazy. I mean, KNF is gearing up here. We know who won the bid on that, by the way. It hasn't been fully completed, but we anticipate that's going to be happening pretty soon. I was trying to nail them in today to get a date on that, but I wasn't able to do it before council, I was hoping to report to you today, but I suspect very soon that's going to get rolling, too. I mean, I mean, the amount of work we're doing compared to what the city has done in the past is phenomenal. There's going to be problems. People are, inevitably, someone is not going to be happy in the city, but we're doing our best.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, Councilman, the main point here, yes, we are doing a lot, but how is the quality of the work we are doing? I was watching when they were patching one of the streets, they would just throw it, they don't, you know, put some kind of pressure to equalize it with the rest of the street, just like this, move on, and it's like, I was like, what are they doing? So, regarding this point, the question is, are we, are we doing some confirmation on these? Are we auditing? Are we confirming that these amount of money are done for some projects? Because apparently, it's in every council meeting, say, huge amount of money done for the same thing, and I'm assuming, I don't know, if you are, like, are you doing some confirmation? Are you...
Yeah, they're all tied to a, they're all tied to a number, a project number. Every bill, it can be directly associated to the project. And then the way they were doing the GLs and the billing now is, we put it in as a resolution, we set a PO on it, and it comes right off the balance of...
So, now, yes, it is attached to a project, but are we, are we just accepting any amount of money that's thrown to us? So, I need 90,000 for this, okay, pay him 90,000. That's the question, because Councilman is noticing that there's, if you add like millions of dollars, I don't know for what, but if we do this in-house and hire engineers to do it, maybe we'll be saving this money and just, maybe if you hire three, four.
Mr. Mayor, it starts in the field. We do have our field supervisors checking in on Hennessy and their project all the time. I always tell our field DPW superintendent and assistant supervisor, I always remind them that they're above all of our contractors and if they see something out of line, you tell us, you tell them, you get it done. So it starts in the field with that. Then any bills that come in go directly to John's office and he reviews everything that comes past him. Not one of these has not been approved by John's office. Then it also goes to finance and finally, I take a peek at it, too. So it goes through a lot of layers before it comes to you.
I don't rubber stamp, a matter of fact, I get called up a lot of times because they wanna know where their check is. There's many bills I hold back because they just can't relate it to a project or a lot of questions.
There were some incidents that I brought to the attention of the city manager where some of the subcontractors did some work that the city had no idea that they did it, had no record. And then one of the residents caught them by video because they left a big hole open in the sidewalk of the residence and the city kept blaming the resident. They kept telling him, "You're the one who did it." So his wife, luckily, when they came to work, took a video of the trucks that came, sent it to the city manager, he was like, "Oh, it's so-and-so."
Yeah, they were fired.
So this is one example how things are done without our supervision. So, and maybe there are incidents that's happening, but...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that incident in particular was quite, I mean, it was brought to our attention rather recently, but as you know, it had happened quite some time ago. And that actually caused us to redo some of our policies and how we're handling some things inside. And we're still continuing to develop how we do things. Every day, we analyze, is this working or do we need to change this, fix this? And, I mean, just this week, or not today, but, you know, I'm sorry, this past week, we were analyzing how we can do things better and, you know, with help buildings, how buildings get started in the city, we're changing that. I mean, we're doing all kinds of things to pull together in better accountability. But, I mean, let's face it, for years and years, things kind of run a certain way, a little bit loose, and we're working on locking it down even more. Not that it's terrible now, because it's not, it's way better than it was, but we are gonna continue to improve a hundred percent. And I do believe we're, we are doing better. And I actually am thankful, Mayor and Council, that you have enough interest to check on these things and let us know, because we can't see everything. I mean, there's a lot going on. I mean, there really is a lot going on.
I gotta be, everything that happens in the city. Mr. Chair, do you remember when Holbrook got done? Do you remember that? Because you worked for the doctor. It was not a bumpy road. All right, they did one side, the other side stayed the way it was. And then when they did it, it wasn't bumpy. And that's my point. It's either we're hiring a crap company or Hennessy's not doing its job. So Holbrook, they did the entire street, it wasn't bumpy, it was fixed right until they finished one side and then they came back to the other side. Where in Kinif right now, I've been getting calls left and right, they're crazy. I don't even drive on call, I'm in Kinif, because how bad it is. And if Hennessy's not doing its job, and you're telling me they're responsible or our guys are responsible, this is a problem. So, as a request, with due respect to the mayor and council, bring me next council meeting of what we need to take over instead of Hennessy.
I can have the...
Not Kinif, entire...
Councilman, we can certainly analyze it. I don't know if one span between a council meeting will be enough to put that together, but we certainly can work on bringing that to you if that's what you so choose. We absolutely can do that. I just don't know if that's enough time.
Okay, how many days you want, how many days?
We'll get back to you, because we're gonna have to look and see exactly what we need. So I don't wanna pigeonhole us into something and not produce that. In regards to Kinif, we were unexpectedly delayed by the state on that.
That was a temporary delay. I'm not referring to do the whole street patching. Don't, we're not talking about doing the whole street patching. You're not patching it right.
The Kinif...
I feel like I'm in my old village going on a mountain.
Kinif specifically is bad because it was torn out, well, not torn out, but there was large holes cut in preparation for the full tear-out. It was never intended to be left like that for so long. It was supposed to have been done month, or at least under-processed months ago, and we got the unexpected delay from the state of Michigan, which threw it all for a loop. So this should have, if it wasn't for that, been well underway by now and this wouldn't have even been an issue. So it was a completely unexpected thing that the city got hit with. As far as the general patching of the city, I'm gonna, me and John are gonna talk about this tomorrow in regards to how DPW is putting the cold patch out. We have explored some options in regards to maybe doing hot patches, which is much different. I mean, you gotta have a machine or have another company come out and do it. I believe it would be better, but it's definitely gonna be more costly. The cold patch is supposed to be a quick fix that lasts for a certain amount of time to get us by, but we actually have been exploring to do the hot patches. But at the end of the day, most of these streets just need to be replaced in their entirety.
All right. Is there anywhere in the grant for the service lines? Well, to do a service line, you gotta tear up streets, correct? Is there anything in the service line? Well, if we gotta tear up the street so we can do a service line, that guy needs to cover up, do this, finish the streets or patch it.
I wish that was, but they're never gonna let us repair the whole street on that.
Not the whole street? Maybe at least put it back as it was.
Well, they did underline and the patches there are a lot better because they were done as a permanent patch.
Someone just complained to me about Roosevelt. They said they fixed the pipelines and now it's a messy street. So this is not acceptable. Like, I don't care what you do underground, residents don't care. They care about how it affects their cars when they drive.
So Mayor, when we go back with the lead service lines, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but they're going back and actually putting concrete there, correct?
It depends on how the road was constructed. The idea was, we do the lead service lines and we use the road fund to come in and resurface the road. The problem we're having now is, we're doing a lot of lead service lines, like five times what we normally do. So obviously, the money is gonna run out faster on the roadside than it is the lead service line. So people are just gonna be waiting a little bit longer on the streets with the patches. But a lot of the patches have been done professionally. Said the Kinif one, it wasn't a professional patch, it was a temporary patch because we're supposed to get the road started a month later. And then ship caused it to be delayed. If we, if I would've known it was gonna take this long before they could start Kinif, we would've done those patches, I could have totally different.
No, John, it's not just only Kinif. Kinif is a worse street, but you have other residential streets that service lines were done. Like the mayor is a great example, Roosevelt, you got Goodson, you got, you know, there's a lot of streets are, you drive like you drive in a village.
So Roosevelt, Roosevelt, Councilman, I believe was the contractors we moved on from.
Well, all this needs to be taken into consideration from now on and we'll keep watching and see. So we need to vote on this one now, because there was a consent agenda on the new business.
Councilman Alsmieri?
Hi, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Fay?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, approval invoice registered ending September 10th, 9:24.
All right, thank you. And with that, we come to the end of our new business and move to the reports. I start with the mayor report. I don't have much to say, but I just wanna emphasize on the city manager to follow up on code it. That's the priority for us. We need to get it done before the end of the year. Kinif, sorry, Kinif. Because that's the most pressing issue at this time for the residents. And we don't wanna delay it for the spring, because we want it to be done this year. That's the most important thing for us and for the residents, because we didn't know it by so many complaints, so we need to get it done. And I just brought another thing, Roosevelt. Few residents complaining about that. I told them that we are fixing the alley soon.
Yeah, the alley is...
Roosevelt and the streets need to be in a good shape as well. And I don't remember the events we went to because there's just so many of these days. Liberty Day, that was, yes, Liberty Day as a whole was a great event this time. One of the most successful parades and festivals in Hamtramck history. So many people attended, so many special guests and, you know, stars who attended the festival. And I wanna take the opportunity, like we did in the proclamation, to thank the organizers, to thank the police officer, police chief for everything they did, city manager, city council, everybody, Hamtramck residents for being responsible and cooperative. And the parade went very well, everybody was happy, peaceful, you know? We were happy just to attend the three days of the festival, kids had fun. And it just showed how vibrant and alive is Hamtramck community. So we want to maintain that and hopefully, next year, it will be even better. This is, this is an example of something that brings the community together. Politics was out of the, you know, the festival. So that's, this is something to bring a community together, not to divide it, and we want this to continue for the future. So again, I thank everyone for making that possible and successful. And today, I just wanna take this opportunity to thank and welcome a special guest we have here who visited us from San Francisco, Sheikh Nasr Asimahat. Thank you so much for coming. He's here to visit, but he insisted to come to our city council to...
You guys look good.
To observe and to thank us, what we've, he used to be a Hamtramck resident, so...
Yeah, I used to be in seventy-six.
So we welcome you back to your purpose city and I hope you enjoy your stay in Hamtramck.
I'm happy to see the city of Hamtramck look much better.
Thank you.
It looks nice, it looks beautiful. You guys did a good job.
Thank you so much, thank you.
You're moving back?
I got a lot of family here, my four daughters here, my brothers here. I moved to California in nineteen eighty-two.
Well, thank you so much and welcome to Hamtramck.
Yeah.
Thank you. With that, I come to the end of my report and we move to the report of the mayor for time.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last two weeks, we spent a good time, quality time at the festival, during festival, thanks to community, our diversity community come up, the state actually there. Everybody enjoyed it. And whole council was there, our official was there, we saw our senior councilman Hassan. He was not there at the moment, some reason, maybe he has something else to do. And thank you guys to visit us in Hamtramck, your previous hometown. Finally, today, I remember, remembering the people who lost their lives, nine eleven, almost twenty-three years ago. The day after tomorrow, yesterday. I lost few people. I used to live in New York and you have a good friend of mine and they did it also. I'm remembering them today, to this moment. Tomorrow, we are going back to Mackinac Island for the ML League conference. We missed our memory.
Yeah, we're gonna be here, but I hope you guys enjoy.
I hope everybody, everybody attend and learn from there and implement our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, Brana didn't invite me, so. All right, city council report, please.
Mr. Chair? All of residents who showed up here today, it was a good meeting. I was hoping that it will be short, but it seemed like it took us a longer time than we knew. Adam Salafi, you're welcome here. It's good that you came here. We tried to move up, but you're coming back.
I'm proud of you guys. I'm especially proud of the mayor, the explodents, you know, the good job that he done here.
Thank you, thank you.
Also, I want to let you, you and Mayor Fontem, it was a great weekend that we had the festival. My daughter had a beautiful time being there. Great work, the chief, the whole entire department, our city employees, fire department, anybody from the city and also the residents. They were nice and patient with all the traffic in the streets that were closed. Events, we went to a, even though it's outside the city of Hamtramck, it was a grand opening of Bora Bora. I think the board of owners is here. That's a juice. So hopefully, for him being here, hopefully, maybe he's gonna open one here in Hamtramck. And it was me and Councilman Alsmieri that went to that event. We seen our friend Mayor Bezi was there, like usual, and we seen all the council, all the council members and community leaders. You have a good night and be safe.
Thank you. And my visit with the police team is coming, because we missed that. We'll visit you soon, thank you. Yes, any other council members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Hassan, go on.
Okay, first, I'd like to thank you, city, especially city manager. I've been three times Mackinac Island, Michigan Municipal League. I never had the Grand Hotel. So this time is the, why are you going to? So we don't have to worry about it.
We didn't have to look.
So it's the good thing. I know a little expensive, but however, let's go to their bicycle hotel and then walk confirms, come back here. Now we have to stay there, we get opportunity to stay there. That hotel is the world's largest summer hotel. So it is the, is the famous. Mr. Mayor, you're gonna miss, I spoke to you this morning. On the other hand, also, Mr. Mayor, I am requesting, this is very important. I used to ignore it like you, like a two thousand nine, ten, eleven, as soon as I go there, then I see the difference and I start going there. I understand, you have to make the time, we have to make the time. And also elected official, there is the few things you guys maybe not paying attention, advice, like what I had mistake. You go to conference, you double-check your credit account. I think you guys don't have any account. So you have to go over there, Michigan Municipal League, online, make account yourself, then get your credit. So nobody did it because of, and Emily, she's the chief of this program. If you forget to put it there, your credit, she never give you credit. So some of the point, I'm level four, five. Some of the point, I'm level three. I should be getting level two next, I mean, tomorrow, next after tomorrow, but she made me short of two points. So if you don't look at that, all those points, if you don't add it, you don't get it. Later on, they say, "Oh, we don't know where he was, who's conference, breakout session, which one you attained." So please keep it a record. Another thing, tomorrow, I think you guys planning to go over there, be careful, tomorrow, last ferry is the six-thirty. So if you guys go after six-thirty, you cannot go to Mackinac Island, you missing your hotel tomorrow night. So careful on it. I called them, I spoke to them, and they told me six-thirty is the last ferry. So think about that one, what time you guys gonna go. And also, looking at like Hennessy, we did not browse the Hennessy here. When Michigan State came here, they assigned the Hennessy. When you go the early in the morning breakfast session, you're gonna see the lots of contractor companies and they are the one lobby the Michigan, this side Hennessy, that side other companies, okay? So because of this fee, yes, it is manageable with the John, okay? We did manage. Steve Shire was the civil engineer, okay? So before that, we did manage without Hennessy. Hennessy is the little professionalism has it, like maybe John has to work a little more hard and he's making it a little easy, but the other game, hand, he's taking all those money from city. If he did not took all those money, whatever he get benefited from the grand money, he should give up this money. So he not given this money and he's taking. So it's manageable, just wanna let you know. Again, thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, and I wish you guys, you know, would benefit from this conference in Mackinac Island and learn some stuff and come back to teach us and help us make our left body doing better. So thank you so much. I forgot to welcome also Adam Alhadi, our, you know, my previous campaign manager, he's here for us. He invited us for lunch today, so we thank him. So thank you. With that, I think we come to the end and we move back to the public comment.
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may take a moment, our police chief has some certificates. We probably should've did those early on, but if I may, can we have the floor for a minute during the public comment?
Okay, no problem.
I think you need to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and...
Somebody gets the second.
Second.
There we go, all right, we're good.
I don't wanna take too much of your time because honestly, we just wanna honor, you know, city council as well. But I just wanna mention one specific person, give me a car. Just to be honest with you, Carol's, she's a citizen patrol, also she volunteers at the time. And she was there for the three total days, the only citizen patrol member to go there. We woke up together, met you around ten PM, to, you know, basically after eleven PM on our own time. She was there for all three days. So on behalf of, you know, police department, Carol, just wanna really honor you, appreciate you. Yeah, I appreciate you so much. I appreciate you, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for your service.
And I appreciate my Hamtramck Police Department did a wonderful job.
Thank you so much. I just wanna mention, see, we had a lot of kids, you know, dealing with kids wasn't easy. So we need police combined, he drove the bus, I don't know, he had to deal with the kids while driving the bus all the time. And also, we appreciate you. For the Hamtramck community, to be some of them. And then we have Fuad, Fuad, Masha Allah, he's got a lot of patience with a lot of kids. The patience, you know, the time, the effort and, you know, walking with the kids across the street, talking about safety, right? Crossing the streets and Fuad was there. Zakal Akhi, thank you for what you do for the...
Salam.
Thank you so much. And we just wanna recognize the city council, I don't wanna, I don't know if we wanna bring them up, but I wanna just...
Right.
Hand it to them.
Hand it to them, yeah. So, Councilman Muhammad Hassan, thank you so much, you know, and you were there from the beginning. Councilman Sedman? You know, Andrew, come in.
Three headed.
So, Councilman Alsmary?
Alsmary!
Councilman Khalil Rafaid? Councilman Musa, I know you were there from the beginning, thank you for all the time, all the support.
Thank you.
Appreciate you so much. Councilman Mahmood? Zakal Akhi, he's not here, so he'll take it, half part city. Obviously, look, there's a lot of legality when it comes to dealing with kids, we needed to make sure, you know, that we're covered, you know? Police Department also the city, so he helps with the contracts and signing in and everything else, so all legal questions don't bother them with. So thank you, I appreciate you. This is our mayor, I mean, thank you so much, I appreciate you. And you can't forget, I know she's pretty shy, you know, Rana, you know, she had to tell us, hey, I think... And last but not least, you know, look, at the end of the day, if you can't have support for the city manager, none of this can happen, so, nice, really, thank you. And just, I know you mentioned Bora Bora, but we did take the kids to Dearborn and they really, you know, they were generous with the kids. They taught them how to make smoothies, they offered them, you know, we did a little mess, but not too much. So I just wanna thank the Bora Bora Smoothie Cafe in Dearborn. Thank you so much. And we see you guys so in charge of planning to open it indeed, I mean, Hamtramck.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. And thank you so much for the, thank you for the opportunity. Look, at the end of the day, that's always just really a gesture, just wanna say thank you for, you know, supporting me and supporting the initiatives and Max, everybody, and thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we come to the end, we move to adjourn. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
A motion, a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody wants to stay here? All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much, guys.